Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission to order. First item up on the agenda is a roll call.
Ann Brinkman is absent this evening. Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Mark Dietrich is absent. Tracy Gildner.
Here.
Dick Matthews.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Steve Timms.
Here.
You can all stand. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item up on the agenda is approving the order of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All right, vote, please.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 15 meeting.
Second.
I would like to suggest an edit to the minutes, if that's okay. On page seven, after the motion, I believe if we look back at the record, Commissioner Brinkman had first comment, and I'd be interested in having that put back in on these minutes.
Okay, well, we had a second on the original, so you want to just have that amended?
I'll accept that amendment.
Accept the amendment, okay. Let's vote on it as amended.
And that motion passes six zero.
All right. Next item up is the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. If you're here to speak regarding either of the cases before us tonight, you will have the opportunity to do so when we hear the cases. Is anybody here to speak on any other items tonight?
No one has signed up.
Okay. Thanks, Meredith. All right. First case in the public hearings today, case number WZ-11-06, an application filed by ATX for T-Mobile for approval of an outline and final development plan amendment for property zoned planned industrial development, PID, and located at 10700 West 50th Avenue. And we have Meredith for the city.
We are having some technical difficulties with the computer, so bear with me. Hopefully, we can get through this. It's just operating very, very slow. Hopefully, we won't lose it. And I guess at this point, do we want to see if they can dim the light? Oh, there we go. Good evening. For the record, Meredith, record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Keep your fingers crossed. Case number WZ-11-06 is a request for approval of a combined outline and final development plan amendment on property zone PID located within the L&amp;K Industrial Park and specifically 10700 West 50th Avenue. The property is currently zoned PID. It's about 13.9 acres in size, and the current land use is arbarious industrial office warehouse types of uses. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials, zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, and contents of this digital presentation. The property has been posted, and all correct noticing has occurred. Therefore, commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. Again, this is a request for approval of an amended outline and final development plan on property located within the L&amp;K Industrial Park. And the purpose of the ODP amendment and combined FDP is to allow for the construction of accessory structures, particularly commercial mobile radio service facilities within the industrial park. As commission might be aware, in a planned development, anytime there is any deviation from the approved plan, the approved outline development plan, as far as any sort of development standard, or in this case, something that's not acknowledged on the plan, we do have to go through a plan amendment, and it's handled akin to rezoning. And in this case, the request is for a modification to the height standards within the planned development, the fencing standards, and then the ability to have accessory structures, specifically CMRS towers. Now, the property that you can see on the overhead, and let me just direct your attention to the adjoining streets. We've got 50th Avenue up here on the north, Oak Street on the west, and then over here on the very eastern side is Miller Street. This entirety is the L&amp;K Industrial Park, and it was zoned, and the ODP FDP approved for it in 1974. It is located on the south side of 50th Avenue and extends fully from Miller Street, which is on the east, over to Oak Street on the west. And I would point out that most of the lots within the development are developed, and they have a wide range of industrial and commercial uses. And there are six buildings currently on the site and two detention ponds, which you can see in the overhead. Typically, we're handling this particular case a little bit differently than what the current process is. What you've been used to seeing for about the last two years is what we call a concept and specific ODP. That's not what we're doing tonight. Tonight, we're amending a prior approval, which was a combined outline development plan and final development plan. So if this feels a little bit different to you, it is, and we have to follow that old process to get them where they need to be for the plan amendment. Anytime we have a planned development where there are multiple property owners within it, we are required to have at least 25 percent of owner's consent of the property. And I've got an exhibit I'd like to show you. Again, the development runs from Oak Street all the way over to Miller on the east, south of 50th Avenue. We do currently have 12 property owners of record, and I did have three consenting owners sign and have notarized applications within the file, which does meet the minimum requirement of 25 percent. And I would point out those consenting owners are the property owner right here, which is 4975 Miller, the property owner for this office warehouse building, which is 10600 West 50th, and then the property located at 10700 West 50th. Okay, so again, we're looking at the entirety of the L&amp;K Industrial Park. The specific piece we're looking at is located at 10700 West 50th Avenue. And I would point out that this is actually three lots under the same ownership by Peterson Company, which processes and distributes metal products. This is the most recently built property within the industrial park, having been completed in 2006, and it's about 17,000 square feet in size. So the Peterson Company is proposing to put a tower right at this location, and although they are the true requister of the application, staff thought it prudent that in case any other owners within the development wanted to do the same thing, that we would make that applicable development-wide. So it wouldn't be just the owner of 10700 West 50th. If this is approved, any one of these owners could also have some sort of cell tower facility on the site, whether that's a freestanding tower, or perhaps a building mount, or a roof mount. Now, the adjacent zoning and land use includes parcels that are zoned PID to the north across 50th Avenue. That would include the Rocky Mountain Bottling Plant to the north up here, and also the container packaging firm up here over on more of the northwest side. To the east of Miller Street, we've got the Arvada Ridge Development, which is more of a commercial-type development. On the west, we've got vacant property zoned C1. And then to the south, which is shown in green here, is an existing XL Transmission easement, which does have A1 zoning. So just to walk you through some pictures of the site to help familiarize you, this slide was taken from Oak Street looking to the east. These are the transmission towers that are located within that XL Energy easement. We estimate that these towers are about 100 feet high. And then, of course, you can see this building off here on the left-hand side, and that is part of the L&amp;K Industrial Park. This is the view from the south. Again, you can see the transmission towers, and I'm looking towards the rear of the Peterson building ownership right in here. This is taken looking south from 50th Avenue. This is the front of the property. And this is actually on the interior of the site. Now, I'm standing where that pink spot was on the prior map, and this is the location of where the tower will be located. And this is the adjacent detention pond, which is also on the Peterson ownership. The location of the tower would be somewhere over in here. Finally, this picture is taken from the parking lot of the Peterson Company, looking towards some of the industrial development we've got to the north, and this is specifically the Rocky Mountain Bottling Plant. The plan set that was included within your packet was five sheets. Five sheets were included in that, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on a couple of those, but I'm going to kind of pull out the highlights and what I think is prudent for you to be able to make a decision. This, of course, is the first sheet, which is the declaration page of the development plan, and this is where we have the legal description and all the certifications and that sort of critical stuff that needs to be on there to be recorded. It also includes language amending the ODP and FDP to allow these particular facilities. No other accessory structures would be allowed, no sheds, nothing like that, but only CMRS facilities, both freestanding and structure-mounted. The sheet also addresses the development standards being modified. And again, I'd point out that the current height restriction in the development is 42 feet. With this amendment, that would be raised up to 50 feet just for the accessory structures, not the rest of the buildings. And then the final development standard that's being modified is the fencing standard. Currently, there are allowed six-foot-high fences within the development. We're suggesting, and they have proposed, that for screening around the facilities, the equipment and so on of the CMRS facilities, that they can go up to eight feet in height. Let's see, we have added a note that this allows towers to be located in the fronts of buildings, and also requires setbacks 10 feet from the side property line, 15 feet from the rear, and so on. The second page is actually more of an existing condition map. It does show the subject property, 10700. The ownership again of the Peterson Company is this lot right here, which is their parking and outside storage area, this lot, which includes their main structure, and then, of course, the southernmost lot, which is where the transmission tower is going, and that's where that detention pond was shown as well. The third sheet just shows some topo, again, showing some of the existing topo lines, especially on that southern lot. This fourth page, which is really kind of the nuts and bolts of the site plan, shows a detail of what is being proposed with the tower construction. Again, the parcel is currently vacant, the southernmost piece, but there is a large detention facility that you did see in the picture that provides drainage functions for the entire development. And the proposed improvements that are represented by this location over here with the blow-up over on the other side are the specific facilities, which include the 50-foot-high freestanding tower, three frames that can accommodate a total of nine antennas, and then some room for cabinets and so on. Again, they are going to be surrounded by an eight-foot-high block wall. This is the fifth sheet, and again, it is an elevation of the proposed tower. Again, you can see the proposal, which is 50 feet in height. They do show a space for some other ancillary or other users that could add on to the pole. Couple photo simulations, those were included in your packet as well, but I just thought I'd walk you through this existing photo. This is the before picture, which is taken from 50th Avenue looking towards the front of the building. You can see the XL Energy Tower in the background at this location. There's another one over here. And then they're showing the proposed tower and how it relates over to that other XL Energy Transmission Tower. This is taken from Oak Street. Again, here are some of the buildings within the development. Here's the XL Energy Tower, and in relationship, the photo simulation that has the image of the new cell tower being proposed. Because we have to process an ODP amendment like it's a zone change, we do have to go through the criteria. Staff has made the following recommendations and conclusions. First of all, the current zoning is planned industrial development. In order to allow the tower to be constructed anywhere within the development, we do have to go back and amend the ODP. We've concluded that the existing ODP and FDP does restrict the height and allowances for the accessory structures. Thus, we're going through the process to allow the ability to have the accessory structures, allow them to go up to 50 feet in height, and then also to be surrounded by an eight-foot-high wall. We've concluded that the proposal is consistent with both the urban renewal plan and envision Wheat Ridge, the city's comprehensive plan. We've concluded that there will be no impact to traffic, drainage, light, or air, that all agencies have no objections to the proposed modification, and that finally, overall, that the criteria used to evaluate the ODP amendment support the request. In regard to the agency referrals, we did do our standard referral. All of the agencies came back without any objections. That would include Arvada Fire Protection District, Valley Water, Wheat Ridge Public Works, Renewal Wheat Ridge. Wheat Ridge Economic Development did not have any objections. They were the entity that suggested the screening wall be raised up to eight feet, which the applicant has complied with. And finally, XL Energy, who has the Transmission Tower easement and those facilities to the south, has no objections as long as there's no impact from direct drainage, landscaping, erosion control, or any other direct encroachment into their easement. We did have a neighborhood meeting back in July with no members of the public present, and in conclusion, we are recommending approval of this modification with a couple of conditions. Number one, that minor language and typos be corrected on the development plan, and finally, that we add some better language on the front sheet, noting that the CMRS screening can be up to eight feet in height. And that would conclude my remarks, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Great. Thanks, Meredith. Questions from the commission?
No question, just a comment. I found the comparison of the scale of that tower to those public service towers very helpful.
And just another note, I guess that's part of the reason we are supporting it. We think the impacts are already there, not only with the XL Energy Towers to the south, but also the Rocky Mountain Bottling Plant has some of their mechanical equipment that goes up to about 80 or 85 feet in height. So again, this doesn't seem quite as intrusive considering the context of where it's going.
Any other questions for Meredith?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep, Steve.
Good evening.
Hi.
Just a couple of questions. Does staff know where the nearest CMRS tower is to this site?
The one I'm most familiar with is over on Van Gordon Street. It is located on, let's see, and Van Gordon is probably three streets to the west. I'm not sure how far that is as far as the crow flies, but it's on an existing, adjacent to an existing steel manufacturer. It's north of the freeway, and its tower is currently non-conforming. I think it's about 150 feet in height, and it's got several carriers on it.
And in terms of co-location, typically, that's preferred over a new monopole structure. I'm wondering, was there any discussion about co-locating on the actual XL Transmission lines? Other municipalities have allowed that. I'm wondering.
We had suggested some co-location sites for them, and I do have a representative in the audience. I believe XL was contacted, and they were not open to that.
Just a question about the actual development plan, and maybe this is covered under the condition one about the minor language changes. I did notice on sheet four on the left side, there's a reference to a cedar fence, and the other places on sheet five and sheet four, we have a split-faced block. I assume that the split-faced block is a revision after that.
That is the revision we're suggesting.
So would that potential cedar fence removal, in your opinion, be contained under the minor language error?
Yes.
And then if this were to be approved, this particular zoning, potentially, and help me with the Wheat Ridge ordinance on this, potentially, each lot could have a certain number or an unlimited number of monopoles, I guess?
Well, currently, there's not any sort of limitation, and I guess we didn't include that as one of the recommendations. If that makes the commission feel more comfortable, we could see how the applicant would react to that, but I wouldn't have a problem with it.
There's no currently any type of spacing requirement within Wheat Ridge for?
No, there's not.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions.
Scott?
Meredith, could we maybe change the language instead of saying can to shall for the, you know, just make it, you know, shell?
Okay.
Be split-faced, eight-foot height.
We can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? George?
Well, just, I guess, a follow-up from Commissioner Tim's question. So the only restrictive language right now is the setback language on the sides and the back of the properties. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's 10 on the sides and 15 on the?
I believe that's right. And then, of course, the requirement to screen the equipment areas.
Follow-up to that setback question. I'm assuming setback, that's just to any external city streets, not internal roadways inside the property?
Actually, they would be from property lines as well. So if there were, for example, you know, this is an internal property line, that if we had a tower go in over here, it would have to be setback from there and this location.
I guess I'm just, I'm looking at the, is there a, so the setback from the west-side property line there on the tower site, I believe, is around 22 feet?
Right.
Is there any sort of roadway there that we need to be considerate of?
I'm sure there's not.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Meredith. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? Have you given us your name and who you're with?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Steve Warner. I represent T-Mobile. I reside in Denver at 275 Olive Street. With your permission, I'd like to enter for the record two maps that show RF coverage information. And the, one of the maps, the first map, shows the before condition, the coverage that's available now without the new CMRS facility. And the second page shows the coverage, anticipated coverage, once the facility is constructed and on air.
Yeah, great. We'd love to see those. Could you move your mic up a little bit, too? Thank you.
Thank you. The colors on the map represent the degree of coverage. So on the first map, which is the before condition, the darkest color, green, there represents the highest level of RF coverage in the area. The site, the Peterson Company site, is represented by the black diamond there just to the north of I-70. The lowest level of coverage is represented by the white areas. So as you can see, there's some white areas along the I-70 corridor, which is a very important part of this, of our coverage objective, and then some areas to the north. And the lighter greens represent lower levels of coverage, on-street coverage, in-car coverage. And again, I'll go back to the darker green. That's the greatest level of RF penetration or coverage, which means that connectivity inside buildings and homes is unimpeded for the most part. There's one thing I would like to point out. If we could go back to page four of the drawings, the number of antennas, panel antennas, are nine, but there is one two-foot dish antenna that will be placed on the array to provide backhaul services for our 4G coverage. So a total of 10 antennas, actually. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if you have some.
Do we have questions for Mr. Warner? Steve?
Just a clarification. Some of the narrative, I think this particular letter here references the antenna facility will have space available for a second carrier. Others recommend potentially three. The site, or page sheet five only has, I think, two. Can you explain whether or not it'll be two or three, I guess? And is 50 feet tall enough to accommodate three?
Probably not, no. There is, it's a 50-foot pole, as you mentioned. T-Mobile will have the top, probably 10 feet of the pole, and then there's a separation that's required between the next set of antennas. So, I mean, it's possible to have two additional carriers, more likely one additional carrier on the pole. But again, it depends upon the carrier and their coverage objective, as to whether they could be, satisfy their objective by being lower than, let's say, 40 feet on the pole.
Thank you. No more questions.
Just questions on the graphics. The other towers, I assume, the ones in blue are not T-Mobile towers? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then there's several pink dots. I'm just curious what those are.
The tower to the west is the one that was just referenced earlier.
No, I'm sorry. The very small ones that are all over the place?
Those represent lines, customer lines.
Got it.
Any other questions? One quick question for you, Mr. Warner. What's the reasoning behind the additional height? Why 50 feet versus the 45 or 42 feet?
It's all about coverage. I'm not an RF engineer, but it's key to getting, meeting the minimum coverage objective that we have for this target area.
Okay.
We would rather have it higher, but?
I see. Okay. Any more questions? Okay, thank you for giving us this info. The map's very useful. Do we have anybody who, okay, is there anybody who would like to come and make a comment or about this case from the public? Okay. Great, with that, I'll close the public hearing on this case, and we'll, yeah?
One more question.
Oh, sure.
Are you representing the property owner then as well?
Mr. Warner? Okay, I have one more question then, I guess, for the property owner, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
A question is, right, currently, the way the zoning is, is potentially an unlimited number of these towers could be permitted within this development with this zoning As representative of the property owner, if that were to be limited to one CMRS facility per lot, would you be agreeable to that?
Well, I can't speak directly for the owner of the property. I would... Well, I can't speak directly for the owner of the property. I would, I would feel more comfortable posing that question to them and asking them directly if that's something that they would find acceptable or not, before I can answer that question. It's, as a general matter, it's, as a practical matter, it's not typical that these sites are located. There are locations where you have them side by side, but there are very few. And if you get locations too close to each other, then you may have problems of interference. So the likelihood is, the likelihood would be that if there are another carrier wanted to be in this particular location, they would probably choose possibly one of the other properties. But as far as the owner is concerned, as to the number of poles that might be located on his property, I don't, I don't think they would probably have a problem with that, but I would rather defer to them before I speak for them.
Thank you.
I'd like to just interject one thing. Typically, you know, I feel, I think I know where you're going. And if you feel like you want to do that, what I would encourage you to do is limit that to one tower, not one facility, because a lot of times, people will find a building that's a really great location, and then there will be several carriers that are wall-mounted on the building or on a roof. So if you're feeling like that is an appropriate condition, I would limit that just to one tower per lot.
And still promote the idea of the co-location-
Of the co-location, yes.
That's fair. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, with that, I'll close the public portion of this hearing, and we'll, I guess, entertain some motions or discussion, or both.
I would, and is this a time to entertain additional conditions? Or at least throw it out there? I would like to propose the idea of perhaps, as staff alluded to, a maximum of one, then tower per lot. There are currently, I think, seven lots around there, so potentially there could be seven towers. That more than likely won't happen, but a little protection, even though this is one of the more industrial areas of Wheat Ridge, I don't know if cart launches necessarily needed 100 percent. But I think perhaps one per, one tower per lot could be a fair compromise and still give some protection. So my, I would like to add a third condition that would require a maximum of one C MRS tower shall be allowed per lot, if that's okay with the commissioner.
I just have one question on that. If there is an additional tower built, would they have to come back in and amend the PID again?
Not the way we have it set up. They would be able to just get a building permit. Now, if that condition gets put on it, and it's approved, and somebody wanted to go have two towers on one lot, then they'd have to come back through to make that modification. But generally, no, just a building permit.
So they could still come, if they really wanted that second tower, they could come back?
They could come back.
Just like they're here today? Okay. Scott? I'm ready for a motion. Okay. Any, any, any more? Okay, yeah.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-11-06, a request for approval of an amended outline and final development plan for property zone planned industrial development located in the L&amp;K Industrial Park, including property addressed as 10700 West 50th Avenue for the following reasons. One, both the Kipling-I-70 urban renewal plan envisioned Wheat Ridge support the amendment. Two, the evaluation criteria used to create a zone change supports the request with the following conditions: Minor language and typographical errors be corrected prior to the City Council public hearing. Two, a note added indicating that CMRS equipment shall be screened with split-face block wall to an eight-foot height. Three, to allow one CMRS tower up to 50-foot in height per property parcel.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote, please. All right. Thank you. Okay, next case. This is case number WZ-11-07, an application filed by William Last for approval of a zone change from commercial one to mixed-use commercial for property located at 4565 Kipling Street.
Mr. Chair, I need to make some disclosures.
Okay.
That property is located directly north of where my office is located, and has been located for the last 22 years. I noticed on the public hearing that my landlord is going to come in and speak against it, and he, in fact, is located in the office, or in the audience right now. The, my landlord also has been the city attorney in Wheat Ridge for a number of years, and there has been no ex parte communication, and I have no direct financial interest.
Okay. Thank you for that disclosure. I think the most perfect thing to do would be to call for a motion in favor of recusal. If that motion passes, you can be, you could be recused. If the motion does not pass, you would remain for this case.
Intent, Mr. Matthews, that you would like to recuse yourself, or you thought you could act unbiased as a member of the commission?
I think I can act in an unbiased fashion.
Okay.
That's up to the body.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we, just to, just to properly vote on it, I think that would be good to have it on the record. So if I could get a motion on that, I would appreciate it.
So would a yes vote be to, a vote to require a recusal?
To require a recusal, yes. And a no vote would be to allow Mr. Matthews to remain here for this case.
I'd like to make a motion in favor of recusal.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Call for a vote, please. Okay, the no vote- Against recusal, that's correct. All right. I think we can proceed. Let's hear from the city. Hi.
Before Lauren gets started, I know she's been in front of you one time. Lauren Mikulak is our planner one. She's been with us for about a year now, and she is making her first land use case presentation in front of commission, and I assume you'll all behave yourselves.
Scout's honor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Lauren.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Lauren Mikulak, planner with Community Development Department here in the city. Tonight, I'm presenting case WZ-1107, request for approval of zone change from commercial one to mixed-use commercial on property at 4565 Kipling Street. And I would like to enter into the record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is in the city of Wheat Ridge, and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. The commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The property is outlined in this aerial in red. 4565 Kipling is located near the center of Wheat Ridge, about a quarter mile south of I-70. Parcel is about one acre in size, does have an unusually long and narrow shape, about 100 feet of frontage on Kipling, and then nearly 500 feet long. It is zoned commercial one, and it's surrounded, as you can see, by this patchwork, a variety of zoning districts and land uses. Across the street is a large vacant area, mixed zoning R2 and neighborhood commercial. On the west side of Kipling, immediately north of the subject property, in this orange area, R3 is a multifamily residential development. The front portion of that lot is vacant, undeveloped. To the south of the subject property is an office building here, zoned neighborhood commercial in that light pink color. The majority of this corner here at Kipling and 44th is C1 and A1, which are all properties part of the Jefferson Avenue United Methodist Church. And immediately to the west of the subject property is a parcel zoned A1, agricultural one, that contains a single-family residential home. That home is occupied, and a little history here, it is under separate ownership, and it appears to have frontage on Lee Street, but Lee Street did not exist when the home was constructed. So that property to the rear is addressed off of Kipling, and it's oriented toward Kipling. So, for example, the garage doors face Kipling Street. And so for that reason, we get to existing conditions. The colored bar at the bottom of the survey plot is a 10-foot wide access easement, and that was established in the 50s. It grants perpetual access to that rear property that I was just describing to the west and to utility providers. I'm going to switch to an aerial here. As you can see, the easement is used for access to that neighboring lot to the west. The aerial also shows that the subject property is currently vacant. A little more background on the subject parcel. As I said, it's now zoned C1, and that's the result of a zone change in 1980. At that time, the zone change applicant was intending to open a ski shop and an office. Previously, the lot was also zoned residentially, and it had a single-family home. You can just make out the outline of a concrete pad. The home was existing on the east side of the lot, closer to Kipling. The ski shop development never took place in the 80s, and there have not been any commercial uses on the property since the zoning was changed to commercial one over 30 years ago. So as a result, this property has been pretty underutilized for several decades and has led to some deterioration. You'll notice that home is no longer there. It was, the city initiated abatement in 2005, and so we have the resulting vacant parcel. So that brings us to today. I do have a couple photos to show. This is the front of the property looking from Kipling towards the south. This is the neighboring office building. You see on the left side of the screen, this mailbox is, actually says 4471. So that's the mailbox for that residential property to the west. Another image from the front of the property, this one sort of highlights that narrow width. On the left side, you're seeing railroad ties. That's about where the southern property line is. And then you can just make out some of the structures associated with that residential property, the rear. And on the right side here is the multifamily development to the north. A closer view of that neighboring property, that gravel road is that 10-foot easement, part of that easement. And now we're on Kipling, looking north. There were street improvements, streetscape improvements, those light poles and the pavers that occurred within the last eight years. This image also shows there are actually two existing curb cuts, one in the lower corner here of the picture, and one towards the center. Chances are that CDOT, who controls Kipling, will likely request a future developer to consolidate those to one curb cut. Looking south on Kipling, you'll see a little bit of that office building to the south, and you can also see an acceleration-deceleration lane here. And it's likely that CDOT would ask for that to be extended across the frontage of the subject property. Right now, it stops just short of the subject parcel. And lastly, this image is also looking south, but I'm standing further north of the property. So this grove is showing that there are several mature trees, lots of mature landscaping on the property, and these trees are located right there on the northern property line. So the applicant is requesting a zone change from the commercial one district to the mixed-use commercial, commercial district. Applicant's a potential purchaser of the property, and he's proposed a mini-storage facility with an onsite employee residence. And I should point out that if the zone change request is approved, the proposed miniStorage facility would still require a conditional use permit, and that's unique to the mixed-use zone districts. Review of a conditional use is administrative, but it does take into consideration property design, potential impacts on adjacent properties, and the operation of the use, the business operations. Site plan review would be required either after this conditional use permit or for any type of development that would be in the mixed-use district, to ensure compliance with the mixed-use standards, which we'll look at some of those right now. So this table compares the development standards for the mixed-use commercial district, which is proposed, and the C1, which is existing. Staff feels that one of the biggest benefits of a zone change to mixed-use is the added flexibility in terms of site design. C1 does currently allow for a range of uses. It has a 50-foot height limit for buildings, a limited allowance on residential uses, and also higher landscape and off-street parking requirements. In this case, especially because of the narrow width of the lot and the constraints such as that easement, these higher landscape and parking requirements can affect the buildable area of the property. So for comparison, in the MUC district, the landscape requirement is 10 percent, 10 percent open space for a mixed-use development, whereas in C1, it would be 20 percent landscape requirement. The mixed-use zoning is really intended for a commercial corridor such as Kipling, and the MUC district encourages mixed-use development and allows a wide range of uses, but it also has architectural controls that aren't in our standard C1 district, and required residential transitions that can help to ensure compatibility with that variety of land uses that we saw in the zoning map. As part of the zone change process, there was a neighborhood meeting held in June, and three folks attended from the neighborhood. There was discussion of the process, and also some focus on the proposed end use on the miniStorage facility. There was a sense that the miniStorage may not be the ideal end use, but again, that's a separate process we're looking at the zone change tonight. As part of the zone change as well, we sent our standard referral procedures. We did get comments back. There were no objections to the zone change. Comments really related more to the site development process. So, for example, valley water doesn't currently serve the property, so water, drainage, emergency access would all need to be considerations for site plan review, and that site plan would go on its own referral process. So we'd probably see these comments again. Kipling, as I mentioned, is a state highway, so CDOT controls the roadway. To allow for a potential future widening, CDOT is requesting a 30-foot wide right-of-way reservation along Kipling, so no structure, permanent structure would be allowed in that reservation area. I'm going to look at the comprehensive plan and the urban renewal plan for a moment here. One of the zone change criteria is consistency with these adopted plans, and staff believes that the proposed MUC zoning is consistent with the policies and goals. In the comprehensive plan, Kipling is identified as a primary commercial corridor. You'll see the site is highlighted in yellow, and it's adjacent to a mixed-use commercial area. That's that shaded pink area that's across the street and to the north. And it's also adjacent and part of this browner color, which is a neighborhood buffer, and the intent of that area is to provide small-scale commercial uses. The property is in the I-70 Kipling urban renewal area. That's a substantial urban renewal area, and so you'll see that it stretches from Kipling north of I-70 and then west of I-70. And so I've highlighted, it's hard to tell on the big screen, but the site is in the urban renewal area, so that plan does apply. The plan was adopted in 2009. And it's, it's in what they call the commercial corridor, and it's adjacent to this red blob is a village center, so intended to be a little bit more of a commercial node, mixed-use commercial node. At our August 30th meeting, I should point out, the Urban Renewal Authority did confirm that the zone change request was in compliance with the urban renewal plan. So the rest of the criteria we'll look at, staff did conclude that this zone change request does meet the criteria. As the commission is aware, there's several that we use to assess zone change requests. They're detailed in the staff report, and I'll go over a few here. Staff believes that the zone change to mixed-use is, as I mentioned, supported by the adopted plans, comp plan, and the sub-area plan. The site has been underutilized for years, for decades, maybe, with no viable development proposals. And so further deterioration may be possible if it remains vacant, and we believe that because the mixed-use zoning allows a little bit more flexible site development, the chances of development would maybe increase with this zone change. The zone change is compatible with the surrounding area. In particular, we think that the architectural controls and design standards may help to minimize potential impacts of future development to the neighboring properties. And we further conclude that the zone change will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare, may benefit the community by increasing the likelihood of redevelopment. And lastly, utility upgrades would be provided at the time of site development if that were to take place under the mixed-use zoning. So staff does recommend approval of the request. There is one recommended condition that we did not include in the staff report that we've since thought of, so I'll pass out an amended suggested motion. We're recommending approval with the condition that the 30-foot right-of-way reservation be established along Kipling as a part of the zone change. And that concludes my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I am going to pass out that motion.
Questions for Lauren? Dick?
Yes. My understanding under the current-
Yes, my understanding under the current use, if there were a structure built, there are some design standards for the facade facing Kipling, but are none for the sides not facing Kipling?
Yep, that's a good question.
But under the mixed-use, it's a four-sided design standard where you could require aesthetically pleasing a building when I look out the window?
Correct. So the property as it stands right now, it's Zoned Commercial 1, but it's in what we call the architectural overlay, so the architectural and site design manual, the ASDM, applies. And the ASDM really focuses more on the frontages that are public frontages, so really face a pub -- are immediately adjacent to a public right-of-way. So similar to the MUC zone, we would require that the building be closer to Kipling, not a lot of difference there, but as you're saying, the architectural standards and material requirements in the mixed-use zone apply to all sides of the building.
Good evening, welcome. I just have a couple of questions, please, about zone districts. Sure. In particular, the current C1. Can you just describe some of the uses allowed currently in that C1 district?
Sure. C1 district allows more uses than any other zone district right now as far as the table. It's the longest table. It's mostly services, retail. I guess I should pull it open. Anything from restaurants to offices to professional offices to -- I can start listing them. It's like a 10-page chart, but let me just give you an idea.
But in general, it's the most, you're saying it's the most widely permissive, I guess, commercial zone district in the city has?
It is, yeah, as far as uses go.
Does it allow drive-through uses?
Drive-throughs requires special use permit in C1.
And then the properties to the north, the multifamily development, one of them's Zoned R3, one's Zoned PRD.
Mm-hmm.
Do either of those districts allow outdoor storage right now?
I couldn't speak to the PRD. That's further to the north. We're not seeing it in this image, this planned residential development, and I don't know that development off the top of my head. Meredith might have some history.
Generally, there would not be allowed outside storage, other than what's customary for a multifamily, like cars, vehicles, but no storage of commercial materials or anything like that.
And then, do you know how long the property, you referenced some previous enforcement action on this property in your staff report. Do you know if that's, is that connected to the current owner, or is that a previous owner? Do you know?
I don't know the ownership, but I know it was leased, I think, a year or two ago. I should have put the date, and I didn't. It wasn't this year. Hasn't been since I've been here.
And I think Lauren's right that the ownership has changed within the last couple of years, but this site has actually been somewhat of a, I don't want to say an ice store, but you know, kind of the typical of a vacant property, weeds and probably trash once in a while, but I don't know that recently it's had any.
I'm nearly certain that the abatement and removal of the home happened under previous ownership.
I'll verify with the owner. And then my final question, just to verify, again, the CUP process, if this is approved, would be an administrative process by the director having that authority, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then can you just review, again, the review criteria, the approval criteria the director would have?
For the CUP?
Yes, please.
Sure. So there are five criteria, and those criteria are the compatibility of the proposed use with the comprehensive plan, the compatibility of the proposed use with existing and proposed adjacent uses in terms of scale, site design, and operating characteristics, including traffic generation, lighting, noise, and hours of operation. Third criteria, the ability to mitigate adverse and undesirable impacts to the surrounding area, including but not limited to visual impacts, air emissions, noise, vibration, glare, heat, odor, water pollution, and other nuisance effects. Fourth criteria, amount of traffic generated and capacity and design of roadways to handle anticipated traffic, and finally, the incorporation and integration of architectural and landscape features to mitigate impacts from the proposed use.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Any more questions? Lauren, one quick question. It does look like in this photo that you're correct in your statement that the 4471 Kipling address does enjoy some access from Lee Street, and there is still that 10-foot easement along the south side of the 4565 Kipling. I guess I don't have a question. Never mind. Just thinking to myself out loud. Dick?
I'd just make the comment while you're looking at that aerial photograph, that you'll see cars parked to the west of the structures that actually are already accessing out onto Lee Street.
Okay. I hope there are no further questions for Lauren. Well, thank you for coming before us. We hope that wasn't too horrible for you. Can we hear from the applicant, please? Hi.
My name's William Last. I'm the applicant. Don't currently own the property, have an offer in on it, subject to this body's approval. Been in the self-storage business for about 20 years in multiple states. Most recently moved out here three years ago, and I'm looking to do a self-storage facility out here. If there's any, I think maybe where you were going with that drive-access thing, we do plan to have a driveway around that side, so she's going to be able to maintain her same access. Actually, I'll be paving her driveway for her. So she'll still be using that. I don't know how much they do or do not use it, but we've had discussions with them, and that was, seeing as how they have an easement and we're having a driveway there, it's not a, it's not a distraction to us in any way. If there's any other questions I can answer, I'm more than happy to.
Questions for the applicant? Yeah, Steve?
Good evening. We got in our packet in Exhibit 7, the neighborhood meeting notes from a meeting on June 23, 2011.
Okay.
And one of the last questions on the back was, do you have photos of your other facilities that you can show us? Not at this time, but Mr. Last was willing to drop off pictures of his other facilities tomorrow. Do you by chance have those, or does staff have those, I wonder, that the commissioners could see?
Staff would have them. Let it grow.
Other questions for Mr. Last?
I can elaborate a little on the evolution of self-storage. Most of my facilities, like I say, have been in this 20-some years. Started out as your typical, and I want to say like cookie cutter, boom, boom, boom. Where storage now is into multiple stories, interior corridors, basically meeting the design requirements of cities that said, so a whole 200-foot-long row of doors is very unattractive. And so they've, and I'm sure you've seen them around, you know, multiple stories, interior access, where you really don't have a whole lot of doors showing on the outside. That's somewhat what we're proposing here, some interior corridors, some exterior, trying to keep the exterior doors down from Kipling so that people on Kipling wouldn't be seeing that kind of disgusting look, especially when they, one major company is the orange-door people. It's not very attractive. But that's kind of the evolution of self-storage. And like I said, most of my facilities are in that 15-year-plus age where we do have a few of the interior corridor ones that we've added on to facilities, but most of them were, let's call it first-generation self-storage facilities.
That brings another question, actually to staff. Could you explain to me the transparency standards for mixed-use commercial, and whether there are any transparency standards from the side facing?
Sure. As you know, Sarah wrote the mixed-use, so I can do my best to explain it. Just one second. So it's a ground-floor transparency requirement, and the purpose is to sort of engage the street so it doesn't feel as a pedestrian, like you're walking against a solid wall. And for non-residential, non-retail uses, the facade that's facing the primary street has a 40% transparency requirement, so that's just the Kipling frontage. And then all other facades facing a street or public space would have a 25% transparency requirement. So there's nothing in there sort of for the, for example, like the rear facade. I don't think that that vacant parcel to the north is a park, so that wouldn't count as public space. It'd really just be that ground floor of the Kipling facade that would have a transparency requirement. Does that answer the question?
Yes. So there's none on the south. There's no transparency standards for the south side of that property?
Mm-mm. Not in the code.
I do have a question for the applicant. In that neighborhood, now we have, since I live real close to there, a problem with the drugs. Is there certain hours that you're going to keep that open and making sure that people aren't having a problem with the public storage, where I know that they've had that before in these districts? I mean, is there something that you guys?
Being in the self-storage industry and getting the magazines and watching Storage Wars and all this stuff on TV, that stuff exists. The facilities I own are in smaller communities, you know, 10, 15,000 people, where that's not a high crime or drug area. I actually have one that's right across from a police station, so it makes it real convenient. But there's going to be a, like a security entrance gate, you have to type your code to get in. Typically, we limit the hours of access. Usually, it's somewhere 6:00, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Depending, there are some, I've got a Frito-Lay guy and specific guys who have like a 24-hour access code, but it's a very specific person who's coming in for a very specific thing. It's not just random, come and move your couch out at 2:30 in the morning. Also with the onsite manager that we're proposing, it kind of has somebody at least living there, watching, and typically, we have the, the security camera feeds, not only feed to the office, but they feed to the residents. So if she does wake up at 2:30 in the morning and there's some guy out there with a crowbar, you know, she, all she has to do is like look in her living room. She doesn't actually have to go down to the office and do that. So hopefully, there wouldn't be any of that shenanigans.
Because right now, in that, in that district, it's, that, our little area right there is the biggest crime rate we have, I think, in District 4, and I was just kind of curious what you guys do for that.
From the area, I'm hoping that doesn't continue, but with the interior corridor ones, there, people are locked out of that, so you can't really be trying to break in and do that kind of stuff. We're also, to meet ADA requirements, we go with like automatic garage door openers, so there is no lock-to-cut type thing. Find that that's more secure than any locking mechanism out there. You don't have the remote control, you're not getting in.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve?
I have a follow-up to both staff and applicant. Is the caretaker's unit, is that required under the mixed-use zoning?
No, it's not required, but it's, there are fewer restrictions to have residential uses in the mixed-use district.
In terms of, well, I'll save that question. Thank you.
George?
If I could, I'd just ask a couple of questions about your review. I assume you've reviewed the architectural standards that then would apply to this new zoning?
Yes, to a certain degree. I'm not an architect, so, and I, I don't propose to be, you know.
But you're aware of the requirements?
Yeah, there's, you know, like she mentioned, a certain amount of glass area in the front, which, which basically meets what we're, what we planned to do anyway. Most of the requirements are things that we're planning to do regardless. We want the office will be up front, there'll be glass there. There's different, and without looking at the requirements, there's, you use different materials and, so like a brick front. I know at the, at the hearing, they were, the property in the south, that office building is brick. They were wondering if it would be the same color brick or, you know, so that didn't seem to be an issue.
Okay. And so it sounds like you studied it and the site to some extent. Do you know conceptually or actually how many units, storage units you're talking about? And the configuration, a single-story, multiple?
It's a two-story building. Obviously, the upstairs is all interior corridors. The first floor will, will have some interior corridor because it's going to be like 60 feet wide, so the driveway will go around the outside. There'll be units on the outside, obviously, and then a hallway that goes in. We're still kind of ironing out exactly what the unit mix wants to be, but, and off the top of my head, I want to guess 150 units, but I never really bothered to count it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Steve?
One more follow-up for staff, please. You referenced at the beginning that the C1 is the most permissive of our commercial zone districts. However, mini-storage is not allowed in C1. What zone districts currently is miniStorage allowed in? Is that right?
Those would be allowed in, I believe, industrial, which is, you know, what we consider a different category than commercial, obviously, and perhaps planned commercial development. So really, when Mr. Last came to us with his, his proposed use, he had two options, and that was to mix, to rezone to mixed-use and get a CUP, or rezone to planned development.
I have one quick question first, Steph. What is the, the existing structures to the, to the north and the south? How many stories are those? Do you recall?
I believe that the office building is three stories, and then I think that the residence is two.
Probably. It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, neither of those structures would be C1 or right-of-way.
Okay.
I think also it's a lot more normal as Mr. Last, you're proposing a two-story building to the east, and then is it also a two-story building to the west?
We've changed our design. Initially, it was going to be two separate buildings. One was going to be a one-story, kind of the typical first-generation storage facility. We decided to just incorporate the entire building into the two-story. It would be more pleasing, I think, than having this two-story, then drop down to, you know, the, the one-story kind of building. So right now, it's set up for like one two-story building.
Okay. All right. So, but, but two stories is what your, your plans are right now?
Two-story.
In terms of profile and how that fits in? Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Okay. Thanks a lot for filling us in on your plans. Okay, we have some folks who would like to speak on this case, and what I'll do is call you up if you could address your comments to us. Any questions you have, please address them to us, and we'll consolidate all of those after everybody's testimony is concluded. And if there are questions, we can, we can ask that of staff or the applicant. And I'll go down this list, and if you'd like to come up and speak, please do. Maurice Fox?
Good evening. Myself and Larry Fike are the owners of the office building that lies south of the subject property. I bring to your attention one thing that we want to have the city council aware of, and that is that when you have a property like, like we have, where the, there's a common boundary line between the two properties, and our property, our, our building alone is, is 100 feet across. We have 100 feet on 200 feet, so we, we are eligible for the special four, three-fourths of the council have to vote to approve this. We're opposing it because of, of the danger to the citizens that are in house north of where the subject property is. There's a lot of people in there with small children, and we were very careful in, when we had the building built, had a driveway wide, very wide, so you could get in and out. And in this particular property that we're talking about tonight, you have a property that's 98.8 feet wide. On the south side, it's subject to a 10-foot easement in favor of utility district and another agent, I don't know who it is. But this property is landlocked, except for this 98 feet that they have at the front. There's, there's no way they can build this building that they're telling you they can and have adequate roadways in and out of that, out of that property. And that's what I'm afraid they're going to do. You have an easement there that you need for ingress, egress to service the units that will be structured, but you have a, you have a 10-foot easement that you're working with. You're probably going to have to butt that with a standard-type use in the form of an easement based upon what is the concept of, of the project, and that is for storage. And then how do you get the people out of there? When you have a property that was a, that many people, over 100 people, storing things and not living there, just storing things, and not taking care of the property? And the, the owner of the property would, would have to live there and take care of it, or live very close to it and take care of it daily. We take care of our property. Our property is one of the better properties in this, in the municipality. And I think all you're doing today is really thinking about what should be used here. But I think what you should think about is, what are we doing to the city? The city, the city is a interesting situation. It's been around for about 29 years or so, and I can tell you this, it's changed a tremendous amount since that period of time. I, I, this, this proposed use of this piece of property is not in, in conformance with what the city has technically said they want to see. They want to see things brought up, brought up and as standard and maintained daily. That's not happening. This is a make-believe story that they've brought to you, and I ask for your attention to this matter and think about it. We do want you to know about a couple of things. You have a document prepared for the, by the city, I suppose. It's a zone change process, and it shows the properties, so you'll know that we're entitled to a three-fourth majority vote. Our property is shown on there, and the other property is shown on there in color, and, and showing the zoning districts that they're in. The vicinity map that was provided by the municipality shows the length of the property on the north and the length of the property on the south, so clearly under the certified letter that we received, which reads, "If you are a property owner within 100 feet of property immediately adjacent to this property, you may have the right to file a legal protest against the application, which would require a three-fourth majority vote of the city council to approve the request. A copy of the protest rights section is enclosed for your use." So this is one where the, the potential harm to a lot of people is going to be there. It's not going to harm myself and Mr. Fike, because we're older folks and we're going to be gone one of these days shortly. But those little kids that live, live to the north up there, they're the ones that's going to be in danger. And it's because of somebody who bought a piece of property, and we're going to talk about that property, that's 98 feet wide, that was owned by an old man, and he, he died about, oh, between 17 and 15 years. He died, and then that, that house was vacant, and then after it was vacant for about four or five years, strangers just moved in and out as needed. When it was raining, they were there. When it wasn't raining, they weren't there. And then finally, that building got torn down. That, that property has never been taken care of in the 29 years we've been around. It's never been taken care of. And I don't think it's going to change a lot just because somebody tells you that the zoning is good. This, this property could easily be developed by somebody if they knew what they were doing and they, and, and stay on the project. And we're asking you to consider that. Consider what impact this is going to have on, on the city of Wheat Ridge, and especially when you're talking about it's on one of the major streets in the city, Kipling Street. I thank you for your attention, and I, I renew my statement to you that we're going to seek immediately a three-quarter vote at the city council level. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Perhaps, could I just interject for a second? What Mr. Fox is referring to, of course, is the right of legal protest that allows an official protest filed, usually before the city council meeting, that forces then a three-quarters vote by, by city council instead of just a simple majority. So for example, you would need six, six votes to pass out of eight rather than just five. And the measurement is 100 feet, within a 100-foot radius, 20% of the ownership on one side. So just for clarification.
Okay. Thank you, Meredith. And thank you again for, for talking to us.
Thank you.
Bringing us your concerns. Next on my list is Larry Fike? Fike, sorry. If you could give us your name and address and your statement.
My name is Larry Fike. I'm a co-owner in the office building at 4465 Kipling Street here in Wheat Ridge. In addition to the concerns that Mr. Fox expressed, we also have some concerns about parking and trash. Our concerns are that when people are moving out of the used-store building and they have items that they do not want to take with them, what are they going to do with them? Are they going to have sufficient dumpster space for those people, or will they be using our dumpster? And we're concerned that we would probably have to build a covered dumpster enclosure in order to keep people from dumping stuff in, into our dumpster and giving us the responsibility for having it disposed of. Another concern is whether or not we would have to build a fence along the north side of the property to keep people from trying to drive through our parking lot to get over to the used-store building. There is a drop-off on the backside of our property of about two and a half feet. We've had people try to drive through there and do serious damage to their automobiles, and parking is at a premium because our, we're currently 100% occupied in our office building, and if we have people coming in trying to park in our parking lot so they can go next door, it's going to interfere with the operation of our building. Those are concerns in addition to what Mr. Fox expressed. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Mr. Fike? All right. Thanks for, thanks for talking to us today.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, is it Schumacher? Yes. Would you like to say anything? Okay. Nope, that's okay. Karen Joes, would you like to say anything? If you can come up and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Karen Joes, and I live at 4452 Lee Street. My house is the little square on the bottom-left corner. I guess I, I have a question just for clarification. Is it part of the plan to have access to the, to this facility from Lee Street? I, I know that there's that residential house, and someone had mentioned that people are already going in and out of that property from Lee Street. Lee Street is extremely small. It, it dead-ends at a park, really not that far from where we're talking. And as it is now, if people are moving in and out from the condos across the street from me, it's, it's practically impossible to get my car down the street. So I can't imagine a storage facility where people are constantly bringing moving trucks. And, and I, if there is no access from Lee Street, which I hope there's not, but I think consideration needs to be made from that section of Kipling. I drive twice a day to and from work, and it's backed up. I mean, rush hour traffic is horrible. I don't know how people are going to be able to manage getting moving trucks in and out of that property at 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening. It's, I mean, the traffic is so bad as it is, and having big vehicles trying to get in and out is just going to make those of us who live in the area just even more angry. So.
Just to answer the question about the access from Lee Street, it is very narrow, and it's clearly, clearly more of a residential type of street, accessing both the condominiums and then those low-density residential homes. Regardless of the commercial use on the property, we would not allow them to access from Lee Street. I would suspect that there would be some feature built into the design that would not allow it, and it's certainly nothing that staff would support. They would have to have access from Kipling.
I guess I, I also second this last gentleman's concerns about people cutting through his property to get to that property, and I guess I feel the same about people cutting through Lee Street, even if they're just parking on Lee Street and walking to the facility. That's a ma, major concern. And I also second whoever mentioned the crime in the area and break-ins or whatever. That is a very touchy area as far as crime. So I am very concerned about people wanting to try to break into the storage facility. Even if there are codes and things that you need to get in, people still get in. And so I'm very concerned about that, too.
If I could just add another comment to what Meredith was saying, whatever the end use is, if mixed use were to be approved, or even if it was to stay as C1, any sort of development that comes on the property would go under a site plan review, and as part of the site plan review, a traffic study could be required. So that might be one thing to help address some of those traffic issues on Kipling or Lee, if it applied. And secondly, if the miniStorage was to move forward with a conditional use permit, one of the referral agencies would be the police department, and so they would be aware and onboard early to try and help us sort of troubleshoot whatever impacts could be from this use or any other proposed use.
Ms. Joes, thanks. Thanks for your comments. Are there any, is there anyone else who would like to comment on this? Okay, then I'll close the public portion of this case hearing. And do we have further questions for staff or the applicant at this point? George?
This is a question for Steph, and maybe you've just answered it with the, but I need to hear it again. So in the cases that were cited in your report in 1980 and in 2004, there was a deceler lane that was requested or part, part of the process, at least in both of those cases. In the first case, it wasn't, it never went forward, and well, none of this obviously has happened. So is it fair to say, again, if we go through the, the process of changing the zoning for this, and then any applicant comes forward to, to apply, and then through that process that, that was described earlier, would, did a traffic study might be done or, or will be done, and the deceler lane or any of those issues would, would come back on the table?
Yeah, I think it's safe to say the traffic study would be done. And so there are two existing curb cuts, but CDOT would need to issue an access permit to the user of the site or the developer. And so as part of their requirements, they'll probably require that XL deceler lane, and that requirement would be confirmed by the traffic study.
I just want to make a comment there about the traffic. I drive it five, six times a day, and it's terrible. I mean, it, it's horrible. I don't know how people could, I mean, really put another 100 cars in there. In the afternoon, it's bad. In the morning, it's bad. It's bad in, I mean, anytime. I don't know how it would really get, it just causes a lot of more problems.
Hence, hence the, hence the requirement for that 30-foot easement, I think, for future expansion.
Right.
Steve, did you have a question?
I do have one more question, question for staff. The property directly across Kipling from this one, Zoned R2, a nice big piece of property, that property basically is vacant, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and the, and the master plan for the city calls it out to be?
Commercial node.
Commercial node, okay.
Yeah, it is one of the higher priority redevelopment areas. It's just, nothing's happened yet.
Thank you.
I might add, sorry, I'm looking at the concept plan for the urban renewal plan, and there, they're calling as an employment node as well, so.
Dick?
I can add a little history to that lot across the street that's commonly referred to as the Cato property. And it used to have three houses on it. Probably 10 to 15 years ago, there was a homeless fellow that was stabbed to death near one of those houses over there. It was never clear to me whether it was a dispute over a sleeping bag or drugs, but they then made them tear those three houses down, and it's been vacant ever since.
But the city has identified that as one of their top redevelopment sites?
Okay, thank you.
George?
Scott?
Who wants to go first?
Scott?
I just had one more question for staff.
Okay.
Would it, would it be fair to say that the intent of the mixed-use commercial is to offer incentives to build higher and denser by reducing the landscape buffers?
Yes, I think that was the reason for the reduced landscape buffers. I think the intent, the underlying intent of the mixed-use commercial district is sort of form over function, so a little bit more emphasis on what the building looks like, what the site looks like. Whereas our current zone district is very use-oriented and has less of those architectural and landscape requirement controls.
Thank you.
George?
A question for the applicant.
Yeah, Mr. Land, why don't you come up here so the folks on TV can hear you and our transcriber can hear you? Yeah, we're all on TV.
What channel is that?
Channel 8.
Okay, I'll make sure.
I think.
Is it simulcast on?
Yeah, it's live. Anyhow.
I just, I was, I want, I was picking up a couple of the questions that were brought forward by the owners of the property to the south, and I just wanted to make an interpretation of something that you said, which was that this will have secure access off of Kipling. I assume that secure access means essentially that you have to have a secure perimeter, and then I would assume that means that there would need to be a fence line along the south side of the, the property to create a, a secure boundary, leaving the 10-foot easement and drive on the south side of that fence. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair. Getting to his point about dumpster, we always have dumpsters on our site. The fact is, people move in and they don't move out. They stay a long time. And generally, in the self-storage, they take 95% of their stuff. It's usually, you know, a box of this or a box of that. Occasionally, we'll come up with a, a mattress or a... or a sofa, but usually, they fit in the dumpster real easily. And like you were saying, it would be a perimeter fenced area. You wouldn't be able to walk from their parking lot directly into the storage facility. And people who use storage facilities want to be within two inches of their door, and so much so that they usually back into the building first. And so, to have somebody park that number of feet away is slim and none, especially since there's going to be a fence in front of it. People don't want to carry a box any farther than they have to. And with the interior corridors, they end up carrying it 30, 40 feet anyways to their unit down the hallway. So, certainly, they want to not carry their items any further than they have to.
Thank you.
While we have you up here, what's the typical size of the average vehicle that's transporting things to store to or from?
I'd say your average vehicle's a pickup truck.
So, a pickup truck, as opposed to like a big U-Haul or?
Right. The second story's going to have to be smaller units, 5 by 10, 10 by 10. You're not going to get that much stuff in there. The ground floor units will be bigger, obviously, but rental of U-Haul trucks is, and I don't want to try and put a number on it, maybe 10% of the people who ever rent. And it would only be like those, the bigger units, a 10 by 20, like a one-car garage type. In a 10 by 10, if you're renting a U-Haul truck, it's because you don't have a pickup truck, more or less, because you just can't put that volume of items in there. And looking at the area, this huge apartment building that's right next door, those are a great source of clientele, and those people are going to have, you know, the Christmas tree, the holiday decorations, that kind of items, which we're looking for in the second story, the 5 by 10, the 10 by 10 units.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Lastwell? We've got them up there. Okay, all right, thanks. Any more questions for staff? I had a quick question for staff about, let's see, oh, side set, could you refresh my memories to what the side setbacks for mixed-use commercial are? Specifically, in relation to, I guess, a two-story configuration, since that's sort of what's being considered tentatively.
Sure. So, the minimum side, it's going to vary for this property based on what is adjacent to that side. So, the side and rear setback, we're budding single or two-family residential, so at the rear of this property, for a two-story building, it's going to be a 10-foot setback. Obviously, on the south side, we have that 10-foot easement, so that would be effective. If that easement was not there on that side, it could be a zero-foot setback. On the north side, it can be a zero-foot setback, and then the front is going to be a build-two requirement, so we'll have the 30-foot reservation. And then the build-two would be within the first 20 feet from that reservation line that we would want the building to be placed.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I know the-
Not a straightforward answer.
That's all right. I know, I just forgot, with all the different zoning bits and pieces and the adjacent buildings being all different, it's different, like every few feet. But, and I know that the applicant noted in the meeting notes that the initial plan was to have a drive around the outer perimeter anyways for access to those outdoors, so that necessitates sort of a default setback to the building in any case. And I'm assuming that based on what we're seeing here, there is no through-access between Lee all the way to Kipling because there is actually a house and structure blocking such through-access between Lee and Kipling? All right, those are all the questions I have. Any more, any other follow-ups? Okay. Any further discussion between us? Mr. Matthews?
Yes, I really like the mixed-use zoning. I think we spent a long time working on that. And the closest, with the build-two line, the closest that we have got as an example on that street, I believe, is Caruso Kitchen down at 41st and Kipling, which I think actually is a very attractive building. When I look at the south side of that property line along there, I see those utility poles. Those are the utilities that power the computers in my office, and every time there is a heavy dew, those utility poles go down, and I lose power to my computers that are on overnight in the office. And I'm assuming if this is redeveloped, that all of those utilities will be undergrounded and will become much more reliable. That property has been an eyesore for many years, and I would love to see something happen to it.
For the new construction, it would require those utilities, service utilities, be buried.
However, as I go through my zone-change criteria, and I keep score on that, I don't find that the zone-change criteria has been met, so I will be voting against it.
I just wanted to let you know, too, I will be voting against this because I don't think the property is big enough for what the building they want to put on there. Today, there was three accidents right there. I think the traffic can't handle it. I don't disapprove of having a public storage, but I just don't think this is a place for it. And there is a neighborhood that is right there, and I just think that the police are doing what they can to stop the crime there, but it's not happening, and I just think this might bring some more crime into the neighborhood.
I know it's hard, and we had a difficult time when we were writing the staff report to try to separate the zoning from the future use. Keep in mind, if the mixed-use zoning goes through, they still have to meet the conditional use criteria. There are conditions, we've looked at the criteria, we don't know if they'll be able to meet those either. So, just keep in mind, we are supposedly focusing on the zoning.
You know, I look at this site, and it has been derelict as referenced, right, for decades. And as Commissioner Matthews stated, we did work extensively on this mixed-use district, and which I think in general is a good thing, in this area is a good thing. That being said, with the potential redevelopment across the street, the priority of that intersection, that interchange there, with the ability that this property is already Zone C1, which is our most permissive commercial district we have, with the understanding that many storage is typically in industrial use, perhaps start entering industrial uses onto this corridor is a concern to me. And perhaps this property is not the first one, the size is at the best for converting to the mixed-use district. For those various reasons, I will be also voting in denial of this request.
Other comments or discussion, Scott or George? Scott?
I think I have a comment, and it's just, it's really more of a concern, you know, that what I'm hearing with the neighbors is that they want to see more screening, but that's in complete contradiction to going with the mixed-use commercial, where there would actually be less landscape buffers. So, I think I, too, will also be voting no on this.
Want to say anything before I say my thing? All right. Well, I can personally see both sides of this. You know, when we look at the potential for mixed use, especially with regard to this area being developed as a major commercial corridor, looking at the existing zoning that exists on both sides to the north and south, we have a high-density residential to the north, neighborhood commercial to the south, effectively, you know, community-based activities going on at the church to the south of that, and a huge parcel to the east, potentially, you know, ripe for commercial development. I actually, I can see the case for a mixed-use commercial here. You know, you've got residential on one side, commercial on the other. I don't think mixed-use commercial would be out of character, sandwiched in between there. It is a narrow lot. It's going to be hard for anybody to develop, you know, without a very specific plan for something that narrow. I think this, you know, not setting aside the specific applicant's use for this, you know, it's, I can see how it's a viable site for that type of development. And setting aside the applicant-specific use, I think just from a zoning perspective, to me, the mixed-use commercial makes sense. So, I will be voting, I would be voting in favor of this zoning change. But before we do that, we have to have something to vote on, so if there's no other discussion, entertain a motion, one way or the other. Tracy, did you have any? I'm sorry. I completely, I completely, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Just that I'm voting against it.
Motion? You can, either way, for approval or denial, it's up to you.
Okay. I move, sorry, I'm just getting with this still. I move to recommend denial to case number WZ11-07. I request for approval of zone changes from Commercial 1 to Mixed-Use Commercial for a property located at 4565 Kipling for the following reasons. I believe the traffic is one thing, the neighborhood, and the crime rate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote, please.
Okay, the motion passes 4 to 2 with Pond and Bucknup voting opposed.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody for their thoughtful discussion and debate on this issue, on this case. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff, for just staff business.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
When visiting this site for the first case, there's this nice little property on the corner of 50th and Oak that was a subject of a previous planning commission case maybe a year or so ago, right? And there appeared to be perhaps trucks and things parked up there, so maybe just direct staff to maybe visit that and see if some enforcement actions needed again.
I think they're available.
Right. Yeah, it had access, and they were doing types of uses up there. Right, thank you.
F is, Commissioner Tim's brought this up. The public hearing for the 38th Avenue Subarea Plan is Monday night. So, I don't know if any of you are interested in watching that, but just FYI.
And where's that again? Is it here?
Yes.
And that's on the 38th?
38th Avenue Subarea Plan.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the agenda looks like, but...
And is that at 7:00 on Monday?
The meeting-
Okay. Great, thanks.
Do we have a motion to adjourn on the floor?
Not yet.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Vote, please.
I need to clear that.
All right.
I'm assuming it's unanimous.
I think that's a yes. Thank you all very much.